Just wondering.
So was it a clarifying question?
Any other questions? I'm going to go ahead and ask if there's any members of the public that want to comment on this item. Please step up.
Thank you, your honor. I'm Steve Schmidt. I used to be on the Menlo Park City Council. And this document is our downtown-specific plan, which has generated a lot of interest in the last few months. But there's some -- there's no thought about it. Almost everyone agrees with goals of the vision plan. And I think you are serving some of these, maybe unwittingly, and maybe not. Provide greater east-west and townwide connectivity. Improve circulation on El Camino Real. Provide an integrated, safe, and well-designed pedestrian and bicyclist network. So there are some things that are common, I think, that both Menlo Park residents and Atherton is looking for. And they're all -- also, the goals that are the guiding principles included connectivity between the two halves of Menlo Park, the two halves of Atherton, separated by this busy road, and healthy living, encouraging people to walk and ride bikes. So I'm an advocate for reducing the lanes. It improves pedestrian safety by making the crossings shorter. It improves bicycle safety by giving the opportunity to define a safe place and a buffer between fast-moving traffic and bicyclists. So -- and probably the most important thing about this planning process is the opportunity to coordinate with other jurisdictions, with Menlo Park, that has some three-lane sections closer to Stanford, and Brooklyn City that has some three-lane sections at all. I think this study would be very useful in determining whether the three-lane sections actually create the congestion. And if you had a continuous system on this road that considered all the users, kind of this the safe streets, complete streets concept, the traffic may slow down, but I think there's a real possibility that the congestion would be limited to where the three-lane sections are and not where the two-lane sections are. That given turn lanes and proper signal coordination, you'd be in business in terms of creating a safer El Camino for all the users. So I would encourage you to go ahead with this study and see what a deal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you very much. Any other public comments?
That was a premature red. It didn't go to yellow.
Oh, no. I talked too long.
They didn't yell at each other.
Thank you, Steve. It was very helpful information. Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close. Public comments, bring them back to council, council members. Vice Mayor Goia first.
Question. Mike, in doing this study on evaluating the number of lanes and the impact of possibly reducing those number of lanes, I understand that you're going to count cars. What else are we going to do to try to understand the impact of possibly reducing the number of lanes? What will the method be?
Well, the purpose of the counting of the cars is basically to get an accurate count of what current traffic is.
I understand that.
So that we can put it into the -- so that the consultant can put it into the model. There's an existing, you know, model that projects traffic up to 2040 based on projected lanes.
But you're not answering my question. My question is, what else are you going to do other than count cars?
We're going to -- there's going to be a computerized traffic analysis, and there's going to be a simulation analysis as well.
Okay. So a question is, do we have the authority to shut a lane down for a day and see what -- and evaluate that impact?
We don't have the authority. I mean, that's because we're talking about shutting down a portion of Caltrans, but Caltrans would have that authority.
So is that something that we could evaluate? So if we're really serious about possibly reducing the traffic and we want to understand the impact, I agree with what Councilmember Lewis said. It would be really nice to understand what the benefits might be of creating the potential problem of shutting down, of reducing the number of lanes. So I'd love to find a way to do that, but in the -- even if we don't do that, at a minimum, I'd want to know, well, I don't want just a simulation, if in fact we can create the reality, at least for one day, and assess what that might be.
Well, by doing that, you would create a reality for that one day.
That's right.
Whether or not -- but again, what Caltrans and others are going to be, you know, interested in is not that one day, but in 2020, in 2030, and 2040. Because these are long-term changes. And so that's really, you know, what is going to be looked at the most is more what happens in the future. And again, the purpose for counting the cars is so that we can properly calibrate the model.
Yeah, yeah, I hear you. I seem very sympathetic to counting.
We've all seen the impact of shutting down a lane on ECR with Atherton. The Caltrans was doing some signalized improvements at ECR and Atherton Avenue where they shut down a whole bunch of --
We did tree improvements.
Tree improvements, shut down a lane.
The other thing is, I think we also have to consider the coordination between the two other jurisdictions, Brooklyn City and Menlo Park, and the traffic signalization. I don't think there's any coordination at all with their traffic signals and our traffic signals and, you know, Menlo Park's traffic signals. I know that there's not, because when you try to get on the roads, it's just a steady stream, you know, especially coming through Atherton, because there's cars that just start speeding through and you can't get out, even in -- I'm ready to --
You're ready.
Move on with this.
Councilman Whitmer?
Well, I understand and appreciate the building of the simulation model. I think that that's a good thing for us to do. I would be more comfortable if we had a feeling, if we'd spoken informally to some people who do this and understand really what that might cost, so we could really advise council as to what the CIP plan, as we thought it was going to be, you know, what we can potentially accomplish. Because really, when we talked about this in June, it was a little bit more encompassing than just count cars and bicyclists and pedestrians and build a simulation model. So that we get that going and talk to other jurisdictions. I also brought up at that time still, and I'd feel more comfortable if before we were to move forward with this, that we would touch base with the fire district so we don't have another miscommunication with the members of their board or of their -- the chief, et cetera, and say, this is what we're doing, this is why we're doing it, we want you to be part of it. How would you like to structure it? And also coordinate with our, you know, three adjoining jurisdictions, that we get their input as well. And so, you know, I'm not saying I'm against this because I think it is a valuable tool and we need to do something like this. And so I applaud from that standpoint. I just think that our precursor information, our precursor work, for me, just isn't there. And I'd like to know, you know, how much it's going to cost and whether or not we're going to be able to then bring in other traffic engineers to help us make the right type of decisions on what's going to be the impact of putting in a hybrid beacon at every one of our major intersections, or a traffic light here or there, or shutting off that left-turn lane like we discussed. And that when we talk about the left-turn lane, we even talk about it, it would be done underneath this capital improvement thing. And so maybe it still will, but maybe it won't. But I just really don't understand, you know, what the total cost would be. I could envision that this would be $1,000, doing the studies, doing the counts, and then building a simulation model, even if somebody already had a basis of one. It's just to me, that doesn't seem to be a prudent way to move forward. It looks like we're rushing it. Not that we shouldn't be moving forward briskly, but I think we're rushing it. And so, you know, I'm not -- I would have liked more information, but before we even started anything, I definitely would like to see the, you know, the fire district be covered off as well as the other two jurisdictions covered off.
So I just want to interject a little bit. This does not impact, at this point, the fire district at all. At this point, this study will tell us if in fact it's even possible. And if in fact it is possible, we would have that discussion with the fire district. At this point, we don't even know if it's feasible, and that's why the study impact is in play. So for the fire district to be in our discussion, we already understand what member of the fire district's concerns are. That's one member. But we're not even at that point to have a discussion related to, we made a decision because we have to get the analysis to then subsequently make that decision. So I think that we're, and no disrespect, but I understand the fire department's concerns. I think we've all heard them. But the reality is, we're not there yet. And when we get to the table to where if we were making a decision in that direction, then the fire department and all other adjacent agencies would be involved in that discussion. So -- but we just need, I think, to get to the point where we need to analyze and go with that first step. I do hear your concerns related to potential cost factors, but I think that this is something that we have to take a step. I think that it's the step that we have to take, and it's in the right direction to increase that safety and give us more information so that we can, in the near future, and I hope it is in the very near future, start making other decisions to increase the safety on ECR. So I am okay with moving forward on this. And I think that -- please.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize issuing a request for proposal for El Camino Lane Reduction Traffic Study.
And I'll second that motion. Any other further discussion on that?
Yeah, I would like to. What would it take to include the intersections? And I also thought we were going to be looking at the intersections. And just looking at the lane reduction seems like just a piece of the problem. I agree that it's an important piece, and I agree that we need the information. And the simulation, I understand that, and I understand the value of that. So I'm supportive of that. But I thought that we were also going to look at the different intersections, because right now we have these pedestrian hybrid beacons authorized for two intersections, but we don't have anything planned north of Far Oaks. And we've got problems north of Far Oaks.
Isn't there intersection?
As far as studying the intersection, the intersections, you know, will be part, I mean, will be part of this operational study. But when you say study, I'm not quite sure. I mean, as far as studying whether or not it needs a signal or whatnot, that wasn't part of it, because again, it's a different, whether it's a six-lane roadway versus a four-lane roadway, that makes a difference as far as, you know, any type of warrant study. In fact, you know, as all of you know, the intersection of Selby and El Camino Real already meets a warrant for traffic signature. Now, but if El Camino Real were reduced to four lanes, well, the warrant study for that signal would have to basically be redone, because something pretty significant changed at that intersection. So and also, although we didn't, we have not had any conversations with the fire, but we have had conversations with Menlo Park and with San Antonio County. We actually met with them, informed them of what we plan on doing. We actually also gave both shared our personal proposal, where was the stone draft form, to them. And I'm also hoping that when we, if we send out proposals and once we get them in, that, you know, we will have staff from both those agencies as part of our review. Because I agree, it's very important that they have an understanding of the scope and who's going to be doing the work.
So Mike, if I could ask, why wouldn't we include in the simulation model the capability to simulate putting in a stoplight here or changing the configuration of the road in some manner? Then we're building a simulation model for the road that could be used for what we intended it to be used for. It doesn't seem to me that that would be something that would be substantially more. And secondly, I think that, you know, maybe the semantics of the subject, authorization to issue an RFP for the El Camino Lane Reduction Traffic Study, it's more build a simulation model for El Camino for use in our traffic analysis. Right? Whereas we're already presupposing, and you're signaling to the community, we're going to reduce the lanes, we're getting people all upset. What we're trying to do is build a model, but we need to make the model potentially more robust. So two questions there. One question is the semantics, but the second, the first question, I think, is a relevant one, and it reflects the question that I'd asked earlier and the one that the vice mayor just asked. Why can't we add that into this requirement? And it would make it a very robust simulation model that we could use for a lot of different things.
I'm not sure I totally understand when you say adding in the intersections. But I can tell you that we can certainly do that. It's just going to be more scope. And we can certainly ask the, you know, the selected consultant by adding that in to get their thoughts and opinions as far as what outcome you want to try to create. You know, we can consult with them, because again, that's why we're doing an RFP. We want to get the people who do this on a regular basis, these are the experts in this area.
Right. But Mike, I would think that it would be prudent, it would be prudent to add that in if we could, so that we can do the full analysis. And we're doing an RFP such that we can, so that we can, you know, make some decisions.
I understand. I'm sorry, but from a traffic -- from a traffic, I'm not quite sure what you're asking to add here.
Maybe I could elaborate a little bit. I think what he's asking, Mike, is, okay, we've done all these traffic counts, we know what pedestrians and bikes and cars at all these intersections. Is there a way that we can either add within the scope to have the consultant provide us with an analysis of, okay, what if we signalize Selby? What would happen there? Well, okay, what if we signalize Almond at all? What would happen there with that data? Or is this something that, once we have all the data, we can then use another tool to then do some modeling? At six lanes? Or four? Or four.
Or frankly, even a roundabout.
I actually think that, and again, we could do that, but to me, that's not the purpose of this. We can make it the purpose of this, but if the goal here is to try to keep this focused and spend the least amount of money to get the first basic core answer, that's what we're trying to do.
But then can we use the data?
Oh, absolutely.
To do secondary analysis.
Oh, absolutely. You can.
That's my understanding, is that this is kind of the first step in a long process. We can, we've got so many ideas and so many problems that we need solutions to, but unless we kind of figure out the basics of what, you know, it's potentially possible, we, I think we're going to confuse the issue, and it's going to be a big mess. I think we have to first get the baseline information, like this will do, and whether or not the lane reduction is feasible. If it's not, then you go on to, well, what if, what if, what if, what if? That's how I feel.
Please, Vice Mayor Goia.
So I think there's two issues. One is the scope of what we're trying to get done, and the other is the cost, because if we increase the scope, we're likely, we're going to increase the cost.
And we don't know what the cost is.
Right, but --
We're going to get a cost.
But we're doing an RFP.
We'll get a cost.
So in the, wouldn't it be possible in the RFP to ask for the baseline, which is to do a count of the traffic of all the various forms and do the simulation that comes from that? And use that to give us some information about, I mean, the two intersections that really, we don't know what we're doing with yet, are almond or almond Selby lane? And couldn't we, and let them tell us what the cost would be for each of those separately in the RFP? Couldn't we do that?
We'll have it as an option.
And then we can make a decision about whether we want to just do the first step, or we also want them to do the second step. There may be some efficiencies in having them do two. That's a question, just before I lose the floor. The second point is, I agree that it would be desirable to change the name of this if we're going to do that, because we're sending a signal about lane reduction that I think is a little stronger than we want to send. I think we want to look at the option of lane reduction, but we have really the key signal is we want to look at safety on El Camino Real and how we can improve it. And that's one step.
But that's not the, that is not, that we would go back and totally revise the scope, because that is not what this is about. And again, if the council is, and the primary purpose of this is so that we can move forward with productive, informative discussions with Caltrans and our, and other stakeholders, discussions about reducing the number of lanes. That is the sole purpose. If that is not the option, the preferred option, or in the interest of the council, then it's a different type of study.
But the reduction of lanes is only to benefit, if there was a benefit for safety. I mean, the overriding reason for even talking about this is for safety. Now, whether or not this study is going to focus on safety, they're going to focus on whether or not it's feasible, but the only reason that I would want to do it is if it was going to make El Camino safer. And that was the, you know, for bikes and peds and cars, you know, turning in and out.
So it's obvious that the council's focus has shifted with respect to ECR. Well, maybe staff should go back and add a little bit.
I don't know if it's shifted.
Well, it's shifted from the earlier conversation where reduction from six to four was seen as a solution for El Camino.
Safety.
For safety.
Safety. That's still --
But now there's other options along the way that might, might provide a similar benefit.
Maybe in combination with.
In combination, right.
But we have to have the basis, the foundation of the four lanes with a potential emergency lane.
Now, we can go do that.
And then we could add on related to intersection.
It'd be the agenda.
Right. We could go do that.
Because that's not this agenda.
Right, correct.
Yeah, no.
We'll finish here before you jump in. We could go do that and authorize us to move forward with this RFP and go out and do that. Or, you know, Mike can go back and say, okay, here's, reshape this entire RFP and re-categorize it. Phase one is the operational study, phase two are all these other things. But he's going to have to re-figure the whole thing to do that and bring that back in a future meeting.
It would have to come back, because remember, the agenda, you can only discuss what's on the agenda tonight, and the agenda is pretty specific. Secondly, the point that Councilmember Whitmer has raised several times, you cannot ask what it's going to cost until the proposals come in and you select the best qualified person, the professional, to do it, then you ask the cost. The RFI process, I've only done this for 37 years, never seen one, but I've heard that requests for interests have been done in counties, just to find out if there's anybody local that can do it because they have local preference kinds of things. They're not generally done by cities, but in any event, you still don't, you cannot ask them ahead of time, what is it going to cost? If you notice the breakdown in here in terms of selecting the best, it talks about what they've done, how they would look at it, their methodology. It doesn't ask what their cost is. That's in a sealed envelope that's only looked at after you figure it out. And then it comes back to the city council and you say, yes or no, we're not going to spend that money for this project.
Yes, but on the QBS process, you also know about what you're willing to spend, so that when you open up that first envelope and it doesn't match what your intentions are, then you negotiate with them or in-scope or de-scope things. And so we, you know, we have, and my purpose of my question is that, as I mentioned several times, we did say there was a certain amount of money that we wanted to do for a full study, and this is just a piecemeal. And so, you know, if we're going to be over budget on this, we need to know about this soon as possible. And so I think it is reasonable to have staffs educate guests, and many times when these RFPs come through, you say, this is what we have in the budget. So this is the first time, actually in a long time, when I saw a request for an RFP approval that didn't have the budget number in there, which has made me question as to, is this really the same thing as what you were asking for? So, you know, I, to me, I don't see that building a simulation model, you're going to have, you know, factors in there for hybrid beacons, you're going to have factors in there for stoplights, and they're going to create delays. And I would think that it's, I won't say it's a trivial matter, because any software simulation is never trivial, but you, you know, it's not a major task to add that capability in there where we, we then, working in conjunction with yourself and Gordon, you know, you could play around with, hey, here's might be an optimal solution if we did this and we did that, and come back with that. So, you know, I think that at a minimum, as we suggested, asking them or amending the scope to potential, potentially add these other things in these, in the simulation model as options, might be a prudent thing for us to do.
As I mentioned, I don't think that's an issue. I think Mike could probably do that if you reshape the entire RFP, do that, expanding its scope and everything, but that would come back.
Well, could we not do a second RFP? I mean, why don't we move forward with this RFP and then do --
Second RFP, and do the intersections.
Because I believe every day that we delay moving forward on something, I just feel that we are just, you know, doing nothing. We started talking about this over 18 months ago, and we've made some progress with the hybrid beacon project, but I just would like to move forward. And maybe the semantic El Camino Real Lane Reduction Traffic Study, I mean, that's really what it is, semantics or not. And it doesn't mean that we're doing it, but we're studying the possi, the impact of potentially reducing the lanes, and I don't know how you can dress it up any other way.
My neighbor's suggestion.
Yeah.
I understand that we can't propose something that hasn't been agendas, and I'm not proposing that. I don't think that's appropriate for the public for us to do that. But I do think that what we could do is we could name this an RFP for Phase One El Camino Safety Study. We, if you read through the material that is in the staff report, we're talking about safety-related impacts and delay-related impacts throughout the language. So it's very safety-related. We talked about the intersections, the one that is signalized and the five that are not. So I think we could clearly call this study a Phase One El Camino Safety Study.
Safety in operation.
I'll do that. I'll do that.
You're going to have to leave the word in there. You're going to have to leave lane reduction in there, because that's the agenda as that is. If you take that out, I'm going to suggest you kick it to another meeting, because somebody might want to come and talk about traffic safety as a general item. That's not on the agenda. Nobody knew that you were going to talk about traffic safety as a general item. What they knew you were going to talk about was length, potential lane reductions in a traffic study.
Why don't we just call it a Phase One El Camino Study, Traffic Study? And what is exactly what we said, and the Phase Two will address the intersection. One staff recommends exactly what the Phase Two El Camino Traffic Study is, will, I don't think we have to wait until this one comes in to begin to discuss that Phase Two.
Well, the Phase Two, though, Mike, this is probably going to be somewhat of a proprietary system. They're going to build their own simulation software, right? So they're --
No, they have it. They all have it.
Okay, so, but a Phase Two, would they be able to add into this one simulation model that we're going to have a license to use? Or are they going to be, Phase Two is going to be exclusive to Phase, you know, the exclusive provider, sole source to whoever got Phase One? In which case then, what we would need to do is we would need to include that in, at least as an option, so that somebody knows when they're bidding it that that's going to be coming forward, because that --
That requires you to continue this.
Yeah. I think I don't --
Mike, you're not --
Well, no, no, I think we're going to take it to the study session, at least, we're talking two weeks.
You can, you can take it to the survey session, but you can't do it tonight.
Okay.
You can't do it tonight and with all due respect to Vice Mayor DeGolia, I, somebody out there in the public could look at that and say, it borders on disingenuous. When you tell us you're talking about lane reduction, the item that's before the city council is lane reduction. If you want to say lane reduction with respect to traffic safety or something like that, that's fine, but it really needs to have a, a nexus, a linkage to the item that's on the agenda before you can take action on it.
How about just, how about just an "and"? But everything needs, the Vice Mayor's got inlet and this, and.
Yeah.
Lane reduction.
As long as it's got the words lane reduction, I, and, and the rest of it is just clarifying what the study you think is going to accomplish this for.
And we can clarify in the standard agreement or whatever agreement we have, that the data is ours and that we can use it for other modeling.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's.
We need to get a model. We need to get a model from Mike and Gordon.
I, I, I will amend the motion to the, um, Vice Mayor DeGolia, would you like to help me with the language?
With an "and".
To, um, to issue the request for proposal for the El Camino Real.
Phase One El Camino.
Phase One El Camino.
I guess, safety and lane reductions to.
Including, including.
Including.
Phase One Safety Study, including lane reduction.
That's fine.
I, I agree with that, since you.
Beautiful, and I. Now, I, I have a question. Can we do work on that, what would be included in that Phase Two fairly quickly so we're not.
Staff will come in.
We can get them out of there soon.
That's a separate question.
Yeah.
So I'm going to go ahead and second, the second mon- the modification of the motion. Can I get any further discussion? Might I ask? All right, no further discussion. Can I get a vote on this? On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, that's a four of us. Thank you. All right. Thought we were never going to get through that. Sorry, everybody.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
So that Mr. DeGolia doesn't have to suffer the Johnny's one.
Oh, thanks. Now you look like nine.
Where's the duck there?
Oh.
Half of these were waiting for this.
So we'll move on to items.
How about it might be.
Anybody have any council reports? No council reports closing that? Any future agenda items? None closing that?
Well, the only future agenda would be to bring back for.
We, we're.
Understand, Phase Two.
Phase Two.
Okay, I don't, I guess I want to say something about future agenda.
Oh, no. Yeah, then. So, uh, I've, through the whole meeting, I've thought about what Carol Williams said.
Oh, the JPA, the Library JPA?
The donor fund.
Donor fund issue.
Uh, I mean, at some point, we need to put on our agenda.
Yes.
A discussion of the donor funds.
Yes.
And I don't want to wait until the donor fund committee gets to a conclusion.
That's perfect. I think, George, you got that, we'll get that on that very soon agenda. Donor funds are important to us.
Well, you saw how fast we moved from the November meeting a year ago to having a meeting here for that first, you know, study session that we had about donor fund.
Yeah.
And to, and a year.
Yeah, we'll, we'll move faster than that. Uh, any other future agenda items? Seeing nobody jumping out. Any final comments from the public? Seeing no final comments from the public, thank you all. And, uh, can I get a motion, Richard?
Send me.
Thank you, Paul and Noel. I'll hit her, I.